Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Thursday, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I want to welcome everybody to our Charlottesville City School Board work session, budget work session. Madam Clerk, may I have you please call roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mrs. Burns. Here. Mrs. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Dooley?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Richardson?
Here.
Mrs. Torres?
Yes, thank you. All right, and may I have a motion, please, for approval of our proposed agenda?
I move that we accept our proposed agenda.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? All right, great, thank you. So I will now turn it over to Dr. Gurley to introduce what we're about to discuss.
All right, can you hear me? All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and any guests that we have assembled here this evening. This evening, we, for our budget work session, we have a variety of topics that we're going to cover, and I'll outline those for a second in our agenda. I want to state that I know you all, there were some questions that you all shared with us in preparation for this board meeting. I do believe that many of those questions will get answered, will get answered during this presentation. And again, as always, as we go through, if you have questions, you don't have to wait until we get to the end. You can stop us as we go along and get your question answered, or whatever clarifier you need as we go through. I do also want to preface by saying that all the information here, as we discuss health insurance and things, are just for informational purposes only. There's no action that's required at this meeting or at any subsequent meeting. And we can do the next slide. So this evening, we will, this evening, we will cover our health insurance. We will understand our, the financial projection reports. I think it's good as new board members and returning board members, if you have questions with regards to what's outlined in the document, I think this would be a great time that we have all of the smart people at the table who can answer those questions. And then we will talk about staffing, our all-in, and then we will conclude by looking at our budget changes document and how our budget has been impacted by any changes we've made since the last board meeting. And I will turn it over to Ms. Hoover.
Good evening, everyone.
You want to just use that one?
Yeah, let me do that. A licensed broker consultant advises in all aspects of the plan and manages the competition for business. Insurance company is reference to a fully insured carrier. Reinsurance, better known as stop-loss insurance, and it pays a reimbursement for high claimant costs exceeding a specified dollar limit. Next slide. This slide goes over self-insurance versus fully insured. Self-insured employers assume the risk versus a fully insured, insurance companies assume the risk for the employer. Self-insured controls the plan design versus the fully insured. We're subject to the plan designs offered by the insurance company. Insured, employers pay for the actual employees' independence, medical, and pharmacy claims as they incur. Employers set the rates for employee and employer share and collect those amounts to cover the claims expenses. Employers pay what they use. Versus fully insured, employers pay premiums to the insurance company, and the insurance company keeps a hundred percent of those premiums. Next slide. So Charlottesville City Schools Health Insurance is self-insured. Next slide. So let me go through the benefit roles. Pierce Benefit Group is our licensed broker consultant since January of two thousand twenty. Gray Hooker is our representative, and he's here tonight to speak with you also. They provide us benefit administration and consultation on our core benefits, which is health, dental, and vision. They provide employee enrollment, benefit counseling, and education, and they keep us compliant with federal regulations. The Human Resources Coordinator assists employees and family members with benefits-related matters, answers employees' questions regarding interpretation of benefits, policies, and presents and explains benefits to our employee onboarding. Next. A health insurance reserves. Best practices recommend reserves be kept at a minimum of one month, one month to three months of claims cost. One month of claims cost for us in the month of September was nine hundred and four thousand, and three months of claims was two point seven million dollars, and that was from the period of September through November of last year. Reserves allow bill claims to be paid when they exceed premiums collected for the year and without having to make any mid-year adjustments in our rates. If a self-health insurance plan is terminated, we must have the reserves to pay the incurred but not reported claims expenses. Next slide. Cost factors affecting the setting of a health insurance premium rates. Fixed costs are the administrator fees, the stop-loss fees, and the licensed broker consultant fees. The costs we have no control over are the medical and pharmacy claims. And the expenses that we have control over is the plan design. Next slide. This slide is a summary of our self-health insurance funds since fiscal year two thousand nineteen to present. The row under fiscal years is the premiums collected and interest. We earn interest on the reserve funds. The next two rows are the claims expense, admin fees, stop-loss, and other. And you may ask, what is other? And other is P-CORI, which stands for Patient Center Outcomes Research Institute Fee. And that is related to the Affordable Care Act, in which we have to pay annually, and the consultant's fee. These rows are totaled for the total expenses and highlighted in yellow there. The premium over and under expenses is a subtraction of the premiums from the total expenses. The red means that expenses were more than the premiums, and black means that the premiums were more than the expenses. The last row is the reserves that we had at the end of those fiscal years. To provide you a little insight in what happened in each one of these fiscal years to create the over and under that you're seeing in red or black. In fiscal year two thousand nineteen, there was no change in our premium rates from FY two thousand eighteen. Thus, we dipped into our reserves. And the amount of our reserves in that fiscal year was a month and a half of our claims costs. And fiscal year two thousand twenty, we had the COVID shutdown in March of twenty, and elective procedures were postponed until June of two thousand twenty. And so thus, we were able to add to our reserves at fiscal year. In fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, we had a quasi-year of COVID and returning to normal medical procedures. And again, we were able to add to the reserves. So in FY twenty-two, we held the rates the same as FY twenty-one in order to give back to our employees. In fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, there was a ten percent increase in the premium rates. And last fiscal year is considered a break-even. Our current fiscal year, we have had a minor increase in rates, and currently expenses are over premiums. We do have two stop-loss claimants out there in which we're expecting reimbursement on those claims. So that will decrease our claims. And we were thinking we may have another year like nineteen. Are there any questions before I turn it over to Mr. Hooker?
I wanted to, I think this is where I wanted to. Turn that one off. All right, and so I think what's important to point out, for me, I think the last few years going through this process, education experience, for me, as I learned about the premiums and being self-insured, and you know, it's totally, this process is totally on us. We collect premiums, and then whatever those claims are, we pay those claims from those premiums, and then and then when we are exceeding what we've collected, we get it from the reserve. And so I know a lot of things brought upon this conversation as we were building, as we were building the budget, and we were seeing a number that was projected to be about nine hundred and one thousand dollars. And so just for new board members, and it may be a refresher for our returning board members, that if you remember, last year, we presented you all with a number in our, in our budget. And then what happens is, what happened last year is you approved that number in, in February. And so where I'm going with this is that this is a process that usually takes us through the month of March. So we're having this conversation a little sooner. We're having this conversation a little sooner than we don't have all the data that we normally would be working at when we're sitting around the table for this process. So last year, we brought your number, we approved the budget. And then what happens shortly after that is we then work, we take that number and we work with Pierce Group, and we said, this is the amount that has been presented to the school board and approved in our budget. And then what Pierce Group does is they provide us with our renewal rates. And last year, last year around this time or in the month of March, what we learned is that that number was not an ideal, it wasn't the ideal number that we, that we wanted. So we know that we had to do something different in order to, one, make that work for our budget, but also make that work for our employees, because that, you know, our employees are important to us. So to address the renewal, so to address that renewal quote last year, there are two things, if you remember a couple slides back, that Ms. Hoover said that we can control. Those are those fixed costs. And so those fixed costs are those, the administrative fees, and then the stop-loss, and then the stop-loss, and of course, the brokerage fees. So we knew that, what we did was, is there a way with either the administrator fees or the stop-loss that we can address that high renewal that we got last year? So we knew at that time, we wanted to stay with the administrator, and that was Aetna. And so we said, can you shop out for us our stop-loss? And so that's what Pierce did last school year for us. They shopped that out for us. They got that, they got some quotes for us, they got that cost down. And so subsequently, it brought down the amount that we were asking for. Because if you ever remember, we put a place, we put a number in the budget, but we came back later in the What month was that? In June of last year, we came back to you all and said, we got the insurance number down, so we amended our budget. So this process, I'm saying all that to say that this is a process, and there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that happens to get that number where it needs to be for our employees and for the school division to make that work within our budget. So I just wanted to take this moment to say, this is kind of the process that we've been doing, and that's why it's so important that we have that relationship with our broker, continue to shop and do the work so that we can make this mutually beneficial for everyone, and I know that's the concern.
Sorry, just a question about the, and not getting into rates or premiums or anything like that, but looking at that reserve amount there. If, at least for two thousand twenty-three, it looks like we had four months, five months? And I guess what, the number that you were giving us recently, I think was an increase of four hundred thousand or something like that for, again, the upcoming fiscal year. And not, again, understanding that we don't know our expenses yet for this fiscal year, but where are we? Where was that going to take you to, I think, a reserve level?
My
My estimation is that number may be between five hundred to a million dollars that we're going to have to dip into our reserves. And so therefore, that's going to take it down to two point six. Or, yeah, about two point six.
And just for reference, Ms. Hoover, thank you first for the historical information. I think that's helpful, especially as a new board member, understanding where you were and where we're at right now. So I appreciate the work done there. Can you tell me, from two thousand nineteen through current, have we been with Aetna that entire time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We've been with Aetna probably ten-plus years. We've gone through a couple mergers. When I started with the organization, we were with Coventry, and then Coventry was bought out. And I'm not sure if there was another merger since then, but
I appreciate that. That truly shows we are comparing apples to apples here, and so I appreciate that. Yeah.
Well, right now, we are being conservative. I mean, I mean, we should probably have a little bit bigger reserve than what we currently have. But we have, we understand the years at COVID when people didn't get a salary increase, and FY twenty-one, we didn't want to go up on health insurance. And so that's the reason we dipped into our reserves, is because we knew the employees weren't getting a raise. So well, I mean, ideally, you, break-even is nailing it, but you do want to build up your reserves to account for a year like we may have this year. And remember, that's a minimal. I mean, because we don't know what a bad year would really look like for us. And, yeah.
And I think what's may, what may also be important, you could keep the mic. I think what may also be helpful for Mr. Meyer is to, that same exercise like he took me through in terms of, like, when, because we are self-insured, you have to have money in the bank. And so if the claims ever get higher than what you have in the self-reserve, in your reserve, then there are consequences for that, correct?
What is our stop-loss limit liability?
Our stop-loss is a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Thank you.
No, no, no.
On the next slide, please. So my name is Gray Hooker. I'm the Vice President of Consulting for Pierce Group Benefits. I have been managing self-funded healthcare plans now for thirty-one years, ever since I got out of college. I've worked in various capacities, including being a CEO of a firm, benefits firm, for over twenty-five years. And so I am the lead consultant, although we have a secondary, second chair, if you will, that also works this group. You have a dedicated account executive as well that handles all of the day-to-day operations of your benefits. But primarily, I work with Ms. Hoover and Dr. Gurley and Ms. Lewis very carefully throughout the year. As I tell my staff all the time, that when you're managing benefits in the public sector, in Pierce Group, who's been around for fifty years, we only handle public sector groups. Just to give you a little idea of, we're only in Virginia, North Carolina, and South Carolina. But we enroll approximately two hundred and fifty thousand public sector employee lives every year. We work with eighty-five of the one hundred and fifteen school systems in North Carolina. And so, for lack of a better phrase, this is what we do. And in public sector benefit plans, that the plans themselves typically are a little richer than you see in private employers. So you mentioned, sir, about the reserve, we have to be very conservative. Because once in every five years, you're going to have a bad year. And a bad year is when you've got ten people falling, going over that one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So that's a little bit about myself, about the firm. We've been here for several years now. I can tell you that the executive staff here, in my opinion, has done a phenomenal job of making certain that costs are kept in check so that you can not only provide benefit plan, but provide the best benefit plan at the best rates so that you're always competitive from a recruiting and retention standpoint. This, I was asked to present on three slides, basically, not to be redundant, but just to go over the claims information and some financial information. This slide is always helpful, because what we do with all of our clients is we meet quarterly, and we give benchmarks on how your group is doing versus your peers. One good thing about us managing so many public sector groups, we do city, county government, and schools, that's it. And we have many, many clients here in Virginia, probably close to thirty school divisions, is we have a lot of data. And today's healthcare is all about data. That's what drives everything. And so these pie charts represent the fractions or percentages of different types of services that your plan has used over the last three years. You will see twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, 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 twenty-three. It breaks out inpatient services, ambulatory facilities, which are any outpatient surgeries, any outpatient treatments, physician visits, and pharmacy. And I'd like to tell you that pharmacy right now is the leading driver of healthcare costs. Currently, medical trend has actually fallen now. Last year, it was running eleven and a half percent. That's the inflation rate. It's down to about nine point two percent. But pharmacy is still well into double digits at twelve percent because of a lot of specialty drugs that are on the market now. Those are the ones you see on commercial every night when you're trying to eat dinner. Patients ask for them by name, and infusion therapies, things of that nature. So we always, when we're managing a plan of this size, we're going to have a few of those. If you look at the last fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three, the inpatient is nine percent of your total claims. So it tells us a couple of things. You'll see the benchmark is twenty percent or less, so you're performing very well there. So I always get arguments from providers that if you're going to the doctor a lot, you're getting outpatient services, it's keeping you out of the hospital. I don't necessarily buy that. You know, because what we, what we see is that you have a lot of frequency of the other type of services being used. So, but you are doing very well. It's eleven percent last year, only nine percent the past year. And we will track that all year, all the way through the end of June, to see where we are. And that helps with your plan design. You know, are we making it too easy to use the plan? So ambulatory services this past year were at thirty-two percent, so about a third of your claims. We're still seeing a little bit of hangover, but it's almost over from COVID, where a lot of procedures were delayed or canceled. And so really, in the twenty-one, twenty-two year, we saw a surge in outpatient surgeries, knee replacements, shoulder replacements being conducted. That's starting to wane off, so I'm very, very hopeful and optimistic that we will start to see some of those claims dissipate over the next eighteen months. A third of your claims were physician visits. That's not necessarily a bad thing. That is the least expensive of services that can be provided. And your pharmacy claims ticked up from twenty-three percent in twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-six percent. It is unnerving but not alarming, because I have groups where pharmacy spend has gotten up to forty percent of their total spend. And the next solutions that are coming to bear, and this is another reason reserves need to really be conservative, is that gene therapy solutions, there are over thirty gene therapy drugs coming to market in the next five years. The average cost of a gene therapy treatment is one point five million dollars. And the least expensive one that's going to hit the market is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But they are miracle treatments. And so we're going to start to see some of those claims come through. And there are TPAs and carriers that have plans in place to spread that risk instead of it hitting any one group, and that is very, very important. And we will be bringing those solutions to the table as early as this year to prepare for that. Okay? The next slide, please. This shows actually what your, your expense data is. I'm not going to go through all of them line by line, but the columns that we track on a monthly basis for your group and report on a quarterly basis, we look at your number of subscribers, that's employees. The number of members are the employees plus dependents. We track very carefully if that is rising or dropping. Either one can be alarming. You've stayed pretty steady over the last three years in your, in your enrollment. You'll have the medical claims paid, which are totaling there around, for last fiscal year, about two point three million dollars. Then you have stop-loss reimbursements, and this is a very important column. You had over nine hundred thousand dollars in the last fiscal year. You had over nine hundred thousand dollars in the last fiscal year paid out in stop loss reimbursements. Those are folks that went over a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Okay, that's where we get into the nitty gritty with the stop loss carriers because your current carriers are always wanting to get their money back. And so last year, we adopted a brand new program within our parent company called the Stop Loss Underwriting Coalition that opened our stop loss opportunities up to over twenty preferred stop loss carriers. Very important. And last year, when we finished, and Dr. Gurley spoke of us coming in in March, it saved seven hundred thousand dollars from what you paid the year before in stop loss premium. So having that competition, and that's being done every year, folks, from now on, because you had the same stop loss carrier for over ten years. So that's where that savings came in. But the reimbursements are important. I will disclose that when we printed this about a month ago, the RX rebates that you received were not that big, about sixty five thousand dollars. We have realized that some more have been reported in the last few weeks. Not going to move the needle on the overall loss ratio of the, of the plan year, but there are some more that we have reported since then. So you have the total funded claims down there of, of over seven million dollars. Then we have the admin fees, almost two hundred thousand dollars. You have the total stop loss premium and then the total expenses. So last year, when, when Ms. Hoover said, hey, we broke even, you had nine point four million dollars in expenses and you had nine point four million dollars in premiums collected. So in an ideal world, we'd like it to be better. But a break even year in the healthcare environment that we've just been in for the last three years is phenomenally successful. So that I felt like was a good outcome. Next slide, please. These are your claims and expenses through December, which is the latest data that we have for your group so far this year. So from July first through the end of December, you'll see we do have a few more members, a few more employees. You started the year with six hundred and twenty seven, now we have seven oh one. That's good. That means Ms. Lewis is doing a great job filling seats. The number of members has gone up a little bit as well. The medical paid claims to date is, is a little high. Pharmacy claims are already over a million dollars, almost one point two million. We have already been reimbursed two hundred and forty eight thousand dollars in stop loss reimbursements. I had a report yesterday that there is another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in stop loss reimbursements on the way. So over a half a million dollars of stop loss with people over a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
Can I ask a question? What's the lag time between like when the stop loss refund comes to us?
That's an excellent question, and the proper answer is depends on the carrier. There are some stop loss carriers that will only do it quarterly or some that want to do it twice a year. Your current stop loss carrier cuts those checks as soon as the claim is adjudicated. So as soon as someone goes over seventy five thousand, they don't wait until all of those claims have been exhausted on that individual. So they have reimbursed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on two individuals. Those same two individuals, there are two hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional funds that are being processed now. So that's better from a cash flow perspective because Ms. Hoover can keep up with it a lot easier and it replenishes that, that, so you're not going into your reserve.
And so with this larger pool of stop loss providers, at the end of a turn, it wouldn't be at the end of a, I don't know, agreement that we have with the provider, we would make that provider whole and then switch to a new stop loss insurer and then start realizing savings?
No, we do not have to make them whole. What we anticipate in every renewal is that if carriers are reimbursing stop loss payments, then you're going to get an increase from that carrier. So we have already started, we started shopping the market on January first or January second when we got back. We are already receiving competitive offers on your group. And so we will start negotiations in the next week with the top five or six in order to get through to March. And the reason they have to get through March, they want to see February's claims. Once we get February's claims, then we'll get a final number from everyone. I can report tonight, we already have a final number from one, from one stop loss carrier. And the other thing that we did with our negotiations, since we control that underwriting coalition, is one thing we haven't talked about here tonight, but one thing that can wreck, and I mean wreck, a reserve is something called lasers. Lasers are when someone, like these two individuals you have now, who collectively are over a half a million in claims. Let's say that's an ongoing issue that we go into next year. Stop loss carriers have the right and reserve the right normally to carve that person out at a higher deductible than a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And folks, I've seen that be a million dollars. Okay, and it, it just about wrecked the self funded industry as a whole. With negotiations that we did last year, they had to guarantee us no new lasers at renewal. So if they're inside that, if they're inside that pool, and that pool, by the way, covers ninety million employee, employee lives, ninety million members. So you have the purchasing power of ninety million people, which gives us really control of that negotiation. So I checked with my head analyst out in the parking lot, and she was going over about four groups really quickly, self funded groups that the quotes were coming in, and no lasers on any of them. Because I can guarantee if you're with the wrong stop loss carrier, those two people are going to be lasered out. So I hope that answers your question in that we will finish the year out with a stop loss carrier. If they're not competitive, we, we switch to another one, there is no disruption whatsoever to your employees. That's, you know, they have, I mean, all they, their IDs, cards stay the same, doctors stay the same, everything. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Introduce some lasers, that's new.
Excuse me?
I'm not familiar with the word lasers in that.
Well, you're way ahead, you're way ahead of most folks.
Yes, thank you.
So we have the total funded claims there, the admin fees, the, the stop loss premium, just like in the other report. So your total expenses now are running at about three point, five point six million, but the premium is only four point eight million. So right now, we're running at about a hundred and thirty percent loss ratio. Now, that's through five months. And so when we're negotiating with these stop loss carriers in the next few weeks, they're looking at these two reports. And then we'll look at three reports, we'll look at three years, because we always go back three years because we never want a reinsurance carrier of any kind to base any renewal on just one plan year. So we'll be making a three year argument instead of a one year argument, if that makes sense. Any other questions on this or any general questions you have for me?
Quick question. I know we are very mindful of what we're offering our employees, and I appreciate the work that goes into that for a rich benefit offering. I wonder, do we have specific riders for some of those bigger claims like bariatric surgeries or GLP one receptors, things like that, that are those pharmacy, high dollar pharmacy claims that some companies don't offer? Are we offering those or?
We are. We're exhausting all, anything that's available and, and, and offering those. We have outside services. In a perfect world, we'd be able to carve out your pharmacy and manage that separately. And we do that for some self funded groups who, or what I call independently self funded. They have a TPA that's not also an insurance company. Right now, the insurance company you have is just your TPA. They won't allow us to carve out the pharmacy and many, many won't. But to answer your question properly, yes, any and all programs that we do have for those higher costs, we are exhausting everything. And really, I would say, you know, the next five years are going to be exciting, you know, every time you turn the TV on. And the reason, I have a reason for it. I'm a geek, okay?
It's exciting, that's the word.
I am, I readily admit it, but artificial intelligence is really going to change healthcare, I think, more than any other industry. Providers aren't going to have any place to hide as far as what they're charging for services. We are seeing very aggressive programs put together where the unit cost of healthcare is going to be reduced based on data. And that is a sea change from where we've been in the thirty years since I've been in the business. I started in nineteen ninety two, right out of college, thought I was smart, but I wasn't. There was not even any networks back then, you know, you just use your doctor and, and that's it. And so we've come a long way, but the next five years, folks, is going to be very exciting for us geeks that do this for a living. And, and I really believe we'll start to see some change in healthcare across the country. Because if we don't, we cannot sustain another eight years. The cost of healthcare has doubled, exactly doubled in the last eight years alone. We can't sustain that for another eight.
Thank you.
Sorry to understand that last point you made there. You're projecting that the inflation increase on healthcare will actually slow down significantly and or go negative.
I do.
And so our healthcare bill, in five years, we could actually see that be the same and or less as this coming year.
I would, I would not, I would not bet on less, but I would, I would bet on stabilizing. I do. For the first time ever, providers are having to answer why procedures are so expensive. I live in Winston-Salem, and my wife and I were going down Business 421 by Baptist Hospital, if you've ever been by Winston-Salem. And I said, Janet, I said, I don't think I've ever been by this hospital in my adult life that there hadn't been a crane in the air. And because they're building another two hundred million dollar tower. And because the American people are spoiled, they want the two hundred million dollar towers. They want all the procedures and they want it to be cheap or free. And we're coming to, to a crossroads where that's just not going to be the case. So I'm hoping, since the American people are spoiled, we have to have rich benefits, that artificial intelligence and being able to reduce the unit cost of healthcare is going to be the answer. And I do believe that will happen. Thank you very much.
Healthcare before we move on? Well, we're gonna have no change of page.
All right, we're going to go over our projection report for January. This report is prepared after the September thirtieth payroll runs because this is our first month. Teachers are paid and provides a complete payroll for all full time, part time staff working for the division for the school year to project cost. The board receives this report in their November agenda packet through June. The report is a, the report is a month behind because of how the month falls and the next school board meeting begins. If you open the link for January report. And yeah, if you could just zoom in, just so they can see the, the top columns. Yeah, there you go. There you go. Hopefully everyone can see that, or you can look it up on your own. The projection report is prepared from the General Operating Fund, and this is our primary fund. And it's the day to day instruction, operation and maintenance for the school division. There is columns for the call center, the budget holder that is in charge of this call center, the budget column, the amount expended year to date, and the percentage expended year to date. And I believe that was one of the questions that was asked and that you wanted to see. And so that, that's where you would find that information, those columns. The expenditures are monitored and reviewed monthly when this report is prepared. There are systems in place to prevent anyone from overspending their budget. The financial software system prohibits users from putting in purchase requisitions that will exceed their budgets that are available. And we're quite proud of that. Expenses, including under the budget holders, are your purchase asserts and instructional materials and supplies. And we're, we project that they're going to spend a hundred percent of their expended budget for the fiscal year.
Ms. Hoover, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So I'm looking back at the June twenty twenty three spreadsheet that, that mirrors this. So and, and so example of, say Buford. It's showing that they had spent seventy one point one four percent. So they had twenty two over, almost twenty three thousand dollars. So they spent that much?
Yes. And if I remember, that report is probably through the end of May. That's being provided to you in your June packet. So that, that's the expenditures through the end of May. And so there is a big push in, in June on expenditures because, I mean, the schools aren't closed. They have put in requisitions for expenses that they know are not going to incur until June, and that's when those invoices come in. And even when we're closing our fiscal year, we're applying those invoices back to the period that the services were incurred.
Another thing that happens that's really helpful is that the funds that aren't spent, there's always a list of things that are needed that are kind of just too big, and you just can't pull them off like vehicles for the schools. And that was a really helpful thing that the finance department did. They were able to place a, a car at each school, and this was something we planned for and discussed. We've been talking about it for a long time. But no, no school will spend that money on their own, but when we work together, we can help address those needs at, at year end.
Did I answer your question, Ms. Joyce? Okay. Positions are projected to be filled during the year unless a position was filled with a less than a one full time equivalent for the year. And revenues are projected as to be received as budgeted. There is an analysis of the projection report for revenue expenditures in May. One for the vacant positions that did not get filled during the year. Two for expenditures that were not encumbered. And three for the state revenues based on the March thirty first ADM to determine the end of the year savings and monies that can be spent at the end of the year for such things as Ms. Powell to, for, for vehicles, for classroom supplies and equipment for the next year. There was also questions about how we, what do we do with our year end savings? So I want to give you a, a few examples. If you recall, the last two fiscal years, we have set aside five hundred thousand dollars for a total of one million dollars for our clinical social worker positions. They were originally funded out of a private foundation grant that we received in twenty twenty two. And now we're currently being funded out of ESER, which is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Grant that's specifically designated to address the unfinished learning needs. So that was one use of savings. A second use of those savings is we have set aside three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the last two years for a total of seven hundred thousand dollars for addressing our safety and security needs. And then for this school year, there were some savings in the PREP Regional Programs Contract, better known as PREP. The amount that we budgeted, we, we actually pay less than what we budgeted, and, and that's because of the timing of the budgets. We had adopted our budget prior to PREP. And those savings from that contract, we use for an outside cleaning company to help with the custodial services. Is there any questions on the monthly financials? Is there any questions on the monthly financials? Okay. The other question was the next slide, yep, addressing the use of our ESER funds. This slide was presented in the December seventh, uh, school board meeting. And this is our ESER funding that is remaining for this fiscal year. That has to be drawn, uh, expended by nine thirty twenty twenty-four. We have about three point three million dollars left in our ESER three grants. So, and, and we intend on drawing that money down this year for our student support specialists, our site-based substitutes, our elementary instructional assistants, and the social emotional counselors.
And then what?
And then what? Well, remember, we're reimbursing ourselves, so, yeah.
So we anticipate using all of that three point three million?
We anticipate drawing down all of that three point three million dollars, yes.
And then what about the rest?
The rest of it, we've already drawn down, we've already drawn down the hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the HVAC system. The ESER three set aside funds, we will probably draw down probably a good ninety percent of that, because there's a plan for that. And remember, that is a specified grant. And, and, yep. Katina, you want to speak to that one?
Sure, with the ESER three funds, we have been, there was summer school, unfinished learning, and one more area that I can't think of, and, and so we have been spending that money over these past couple of years to, to pay the YMCA for, uh, so that our students would not have to pay large chunks of money to attend the, the program, the extended day program after our summer academy each summer, so that's a portion of it. We, we've been paying for transportation to the Boys and Girls Club, as we know that there have been some challenges with cha- transportation, getting our students to the Boys and Girls Club after school, so we've been giving them a portion of that money. We have paid for professional learning opportunities, Dr. Woodley, to come and provide supports and training to our Walker team, our Buford team, our PSYOP training, there, there's just, there's a lot of different wonderful opportunities that we've been able to provide for our staff and our students with these funds. And so the new, the latest thing that we're working on is really identifying master teachers and videoing them so that we have sort of a PD three sixty event where we can have those, those archived videos of master teachers teaching, and we can show our new teachers. If we, if we notice a teacher who is having challenges with engagement, we can direct that teacher to this video that a match, master teacher, so we're gonna be paying stipends to those teachers for, for those videos, so, and, and there's lots more that I just can't think of off the top of my head, but we will, we will be spending those funds down.
So were these previously allocated as our, of our FY twenty-four, the remaining grant amounts? Or has that not been technically allocated yet for this fiscal year?
I'm not sure whether I mean, I understand what you mean by allocated. I mean, we had to identify in the grant application how we were gonna spend these funds. And so these are the areas that we identified in which we were gonna spend the funds for. And because it's a reimbursement grant, that's, that's the areas that we're gonna get reimbursement from.
So, but when we adopted the, this fiscal years, or not we, but previous board adopted this budget last year, the federal revenue line, which I think here is nine point seven million, that includes harsh part of this three million, then?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not, because I remember there was something about where there was four point five million dollars, four point four million dollars left, there, or more, that we had in excess that we, again, negotiated with the city that was.
I'm, I'm trying to emphasize it's a reimbursement. We have already paid out these expenses from our local funds. And so we're, we're getting reimbursement back from the federal government. And our strategy was to, in turn, with those local funds back to the city is the reason we had that that gain share increase.
Okay, so this remaining grant money then has been, was part of that gain share agreement previously?
The six point seven, yes.
What about the remaining three point three?
The three point three is, it will come in this year, and it will go into our fiscal year settlement. And remember, I mentioned the, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we set aside for safety and security? Well, we have a, a standing under a guideline to continue that practice. We've also gotten in the amended state budget for this fiscal year, and we're looking at a decrease in our state sales tax, which that money may go towards to, to cover some of that. So it's all a blending pot when we get towards the end of the fiscal year. And to how much we will return to the city, if any.
Well, I guess, yeah, might, I hope we're, not that we should be good partners with the city, but that, right, we're making sure we're covering all of our expenses as well as possible, in addition to, again, sending aside, making sure our fund balances in right amount, but I guess, yeah, I was just confused, sorry, where how if this was accounted for in the initial FY twenty-four, under the federal revenue, or was it?
It, it's accounted for, yes, I mean, we have it accounted for in our, in our, our federal revenues under the, the special revenue fund. And, and we, we have a plan to, to draw it down.
Thank you.
The next one, I will turn over to Katina.
All right, thank you, so I know that you all had some questions about how we're doing with the all-in funds that we received. So I want to start by just providing some background information to ensure everybody understands the origins of the all-in funds. In September, in the fall, school divisions learned that they would be receiving funds from the VDOE as part of the All-In Virginia Plan from Governor Youngkin and our State Superintendent, Dr. Coons. Specific guidelines were provided regarding how the funds would be used. As you can see there, seventy percent must be used for tutoring. Twenty percent must be used for supporting literacy, and ten percent to combat chronic absenteeism. And we received nine hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars from the VDOE. And it's, it's important to note that we were told that the funds could be used in one year, or two years, or three years. The school divisions could make that decision themselves on how they want to spend that, those funds. So we, we submitted a plan, all school divisions were required to submit a plan of how those funds would be expended, and we submitted our plan, and we had planned to spend all of those funds in two years. But it may turn out that we will use all three years, and we'll, we'll see. Let's see, here at Charlottesville, we named our plan, the Better Together Boost Plan, or BTB. If you hear any staff members talking about that. Principals were tasked with submitting their plans, outlining their anticipated tutoring needs and, and estimated budget requirements. Ms. Hoover and I sat together and collaborated to devise a budget based on the plans that the principals submitted. We allocated amounts to each school according to their identified needs. And as you know, our schools have varying needs, so the allocations were tailored to those schools' needs, they were tailored accordingly. And, and that, of course, resulted in some schools being allocated more funds than other schools, and, and that's because we provide what students need. Everybody doesn't get the same thing, it's based on needs. Uh, over the past several weeks, though, I would like to point out that we have made a few adjustments as we've started implementing these programs in our schools. You know, schools were instructed to go ahead and begin identifying students based on the criteria that was outlined in the playbook that I shared with you all back in October, maybe. And they, they started to do that, and initially, there was a concern about there being so many students, we wouldn't be able to have enough tutors, we wouldn't be able to identify tutors for the students. So we decided to adjust the criteria, the, the VDOE had such a large range that they were saying we needed to consider for identifying students. So we decided to really focus on a specific subset of students, we call the bubble students, right on the bubble, we want to make sure they are maintaining achievement, or if they were right below where you know, a pass rate on the SOLO, we wanted to get them across that line, so we were focusing on that area. And then if we got enough tutors to, to support additional students, then we could do that as well. Next slide, please. So here you will see where we are with our tutors, I know you had questions about what our numbers look like so far. So you see our tutors and our students there, uh, over to the right. Walker is leading the way with a high number of students that they've identified for tutoring, about just under sixty students for Walker. Jackson Villa, you'll notice that Jackson Villa doesn't have any students shown on this chart. I prepared this a, a few, several days ago, but as of yesterday, Dr. Malone shared that he did have twenty students identified. He was waiting for the most current data, growth data, so he does have a few tutors identified, ready to do the work, and he has about twenty students that will begin receiving tutoring services at Jackson Villa on March first.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So this is the students enrolled who, who you are, or we are calling the, our bubble students. How many more students would we, would this, would be included on this that, that aren't considered bubble students?
Well, I can tell you, if you notice, Buford's numbers are low there. There's many more, I can't give you a specific number, but there's several more Buford, as we know, based on our data. When I talked to Mr. Jordan about his number, he has, right now, twelve students that are receiving tutoring. And he said that they've been having some trouble reaching parents. They don't want to keep kids after school without parent permission and parent knowledge. So there, our schools are still working on that part. Uh, so, yes, there could be more students that are identified.
So we have twelve students identified at Buford, but we have over twenty tutors.
Ready and willing to do the work, not being paid yet, but ready and willing to do the work once we identify more students. And that is the staff who, who raised their hand and said, I'm, I'm, I'm here, I will tutor, give me students.
I guess my concern is, I mean, I, I you know, we're, we're work, we're working and focusing on our targeting right now, our bubble students, who are, are gonna with this support, make the leap into a pass, ideally. But we, but we have money and people, and we need to be reaching the students who are in our bubble students.
Who, who are not.
Who are not labeled bubble students, I mean, that's my opinion. I mean, we, those are the, those students needed as well, more so.
That is correct, it is.
And, and so I'm not comfortable with this, and I understand that we have to come up with a plan, but I just need to voice that.
And I wonder if I could, you know, I think consistently we hear that we need parent engagement, and this is a, this is the opportunity where we do a blast of some sort to those parents, to all parents, an all-call, that this is what we're willing to do. And, and to get parents involved and to get the buy-in that we're doing the work, we have staff ready to go, ready to help our students to be successful into the next phase, and I, I agree with Ms. Torres. Could we expand, could we expand who we're offering this to and not just our bubble students?
And I think that we could, I think that's, that's what I, I told principals, start with those students. And once you've exhausted that list, you've tried to get those kids in, please broaden that, that offer to other students. And when you see the numbers here, our, our programs just started, I think that's on the next slide, but they just got it started in January. We know that Jackson Villa starts in March, but we had several of our schools start in January, a couple started in February, and one more still to start in March, so we're in the beginning stages. Our principals had asked for some time, you know, we were told about these funds after school had already started. And, and so they really wanted some time to think about how this was gonna work in their schools and, and try to get some, some teachers on board to service tutors. And even, um, we've posted the positions, and you'll see it's still posted, and, uh, some are still hiring. I think that Johnson just hired two more people this week.
And I, and I think also, um, just to follow up with Ms. Torres, you know, when you think about why we started there, is because these are the students, so the students that you're referring to are getting tier-three supports. So they're getting high dosage, so the students that you're, that, you know, are there more kids that could get it, that could use the supports, absolutely, the interventions. But those students, ideally, if they have the greatest needs, they're getting tier-three supports right now. We started with the kids on the bubble, because those are often the kids that are not getting the high dosage. Um, so that's the reason why we started there, so hopefully that brings a better, I know, when you look at it on that screen, it looks like, well, that's only twelve kids, but we started there because the students that you're referring to are getting the high dosage. And then, as Dr. Odie said, now we can do the gradual release and include more students after we've identified the bubble students, because we know that those are the kids that typically fly under the radar and aren't getting the supports, and typically aren't getting those high dosage supports that we readily give to some of our other students who we know are not proficient.
The all-in plan is for grades three through eight, from, that's a criteria from the Department of Education. So the high school is doing their own remediation and all of that, but this, these funds were specifically directed towards three, elementary, Walker and Buford, uh, three through eight in all divisions. I will, I want to point out, if you see the tutors, some schools have a, you see Buford has twenty-one people, Walker has like seventeen or eighteen, and then some schools have two. You know, so they may not be able to expand yet, because they only have two tutors at their schools. But the, again, the position is still posted. Schools are still interviewing and hiring tutors, so we can, again, do a blast about that too, and say, hey, we still need you. Uh, but we, we have reached out and we can continue to reach out, because even those schools that only have two tutors, Burnham Moran, I think, has two, Johnson had two, until this week, I think another one or two were hired. We, we have room to improve, uh, the number of tutors that we're receiving. Okay?
Sorry, just, there's a, I think it's a technical question here, do we need to appropriate this money, or is this, again, a reimbursement that we appropriate later? Okay, so there was an action item on this approving it, okay, great, thank you, all right.
Dr. Odie, what was, you were hedging a little bit, or, or you indicated we might extend this out for a third year, so what is that about, please?
So when the principals created their plans in October, they planned for thirty weeks of tutoring. And so we are not doing thirty weeks of tutoring because we just started in January, and so we know we have eighteen weeks of school left. Uh, so we will have additional funds, uh, we had, we had planned to utilize the funds within two years, but because we didn't start until January, we'll have more time, and we have until, we have three years to use it, and, and that'll give us an opportunity to continue to enhance our programs. And, um, and just get better at recruiting students, recruiting tutors, um, and providing this support.
Who is, are you overseeing this, or are the building principals? How are we making adjustments after testing at the end of this year to the program?
Well, principals are sort of running their own programs, they have, some of them have identified a lead person of quote unquote coordinator that's running it, but I also have, um, coordinators that are supporting with math, because it's a focus on math and literacy, but yes, I oversee it, but I'm not doing it alone. It's a team effort, and so, yeah, we, right now, as I mentioned a few moments ago, Dr. Malone was using the mid-year growth assessments to make his decisions. So we're gonna continue to use data, we'll look at SOL data at the end of the year. Um, growth is, the, as well growth assessments, MAP data. We want to use every piece of data to make sure that the students that need this support will get it. Now, I do want to remind you that in the playbook, the, the DOE had said students that got a zero to three ninety-nine, and then from four hundred to four forty-seven, that's a lot of kids.
Population.
And so we, we would not have the tutors to support that large number of students, because four forty-seven is a solid pass.
Right.
Right? And so, um, that, that's one other reason we sort of truncated the criteria to start with, so we can meet those students' needs and then expand our supports.
And so, like, are the bubble the, like, four oh one students, or is it only the sub-four hundred?
We said three seventy-five to four fifteen.
Okay. I love some longitudinal data, so I don't know if, like, as we're reviewing you know, the end of year metrics, I don't know when that happens, October, when do we normally see? That, like, it would be nice to see, like, student progress. Some report on these students, the students who are participating in this program. Did they move out of this bubble category, um, that, like, are we really making room to open this up to other students? I don't know how that looks, I trust you guys to figure that out, but it would be nice to see some reporting on the efficacy of these efforts.
I, I agree, I want to see it.
Um, and then on the next slide, I have some concerns about the during the day.
I'm sorry.
The during the day tutoring, I don't know what school that's happening at, I'm curious about what students are missing to be pulled for that. I assume that would be tutors that are not already employed by the division that are doing that work, so they're not double dipping. Um, what does that, what does that look like?
So, I just, before I answer that question, I want to clarify that we're, we are in a good place with our tutors right now, we're in a good place.
It seems like it, I mean, the number, like, that's wonderful, that, that many.
Matches the number that Burnham Moran, I mean, it, it matches.
Yeah, when you look at the students, I mean, that ratio would be like one teacher to seven students, eight students.
Yeah, and we, and, and again, we want to continue to grow our programs. Now, um, if you go to the next slide, I think that's where we, I just really wanted to focus again on, uh, when we started and, and we are using before and after, Buford is using before and after school tutoring. The other schools are using after school tutoring, except for Greenbrier, Greenbrier is the only one that's using during the day tutoring. And I will say that the Department of Education wanted that option, uh, more than any. Uh, but our, our, our schools really wanted to, most of the schools wanted to go with the after school, and, and, and I'll, I'd say go for it. Whatever you see is going to work for your school, they're really managing their program. So, uh, in talking with Greenbrier, Ms. Fricky had asked if she could extend the hours for her current interventionist, so no, they are not outside people, they are her current employees who are reallocating times of the students, and I had the same question, um, Ms. Dooley, uh, what are the kids missing, they are not missing content area, because that's not, that's not part of the deal, they don't get to miss other content, they don't get to miss recess, they don't get to miss lunch. So I said, what are they missing? Their kid, so what is happening is their tier-two instruction that they may have been getting from the interventionist. Teachers are able to provide tier-two instruction, we want our teachers to be able to provide the tier-one and tier-two, so those students are getting their tier-two instruction in the classroom, and then they're getting this tutoring with that interventionist, so they've been creative in how to make it work at Greenbrier.
I guess, but aren't they losing, they're losing in an intervention period then, where other students are getting an additional intervention time block? I don't know, Ms. Rastnik, you're down there, like, we wouldn't, is this, I don't.
The need at Greenbrier is different.
Sure.
We want to remember that the need at Greenbrier is different than, like, the need at a Clark. So, um, Ms. Fricky thought that this was what was best for her, her school and her students. Uh, so we will certainly look at that, uh, you know.
I don't love it, I'll go on record saying I don't love it, but we'll wait and see.
Yeah, yeah, we will look at that data, and if it, if it doesn't produce what we need it to produce, then we pivot. Make some changes. So, yeah, then, there you see our next steps, uh, we're gonna continue to recruit tutors, add, add students. Uh, continue to en- enhance our BTB program. Um, again, I mentioned earlier that we have three years to spend those funds, so um, we're gonna continue this work. Uh, we, we appreciate the funds, it was a gift we did not expect. Um, but I appreciate that our, our principals and our teachers have really come on board to to, to figure this out and make this work for our students. Next slide. So the other part of the all-in funds, there's literacy and there's chronic absenteeism. Um, so if literacy, I told you, was twenty percent, um, allocation, and part of that, those funds is where our reading specialists are being paid stipend for their work on the Virginia Literacy Act implementation. At this point, all of them, um, full and part-time have attended the State Reading Institute and are completing the Canvas course, um, that's being provided by the Virginia Literacy Partnership, or VLP. Uh, they've completed modules on science-based reading and evidence-based literacy instruction, data literacy, phonemic awareness, phonics fluency. They've been quite busy so that they can work to meet the needs of all of our students. Uh, we're also considering using some of the funds, um, for a letters two facilitator. Um, or some letters two facilitators in our division. Currently, our facilitators are only specialized in letters one, and we know how much we love letters and what uh, to make sure that we have, have this option, uh, opportunity for our teachers. So as more and more of our teachers are completing the letters course, we're finding the need to grow our letters to cohort. Next slide, please. And to round us out here, uh, the chronic absenteeism, we have ten percent that we can use there. Um, we have not utilized those funds yet, we have had some conversations about um, hiring attendance, support positions, uh, and, and so what we're gonna do is roll that money over to next year and, and, and start that. Any question, any additional questions?
Is there an opportunity to hire those folks prior to the start of the school year, so that they're outreach to families of our high-risk students over the summer, that we're prepping them into the school year? Participating in some of these back-to-school events that we have throughout the community, doing the real community groundwork that I think that position was intended for. So that we can start the school year off strong and not catching these folks three, six, nine months into the school year.
Yeah.
Just wonder if that's been considered or could.
And so a part of the conversation that we, we are having is so that that position works closely with, um, our family engagement works closely with some of our SCL supports. Um, so we want to be very thoughtful as we roll it out, I think, uh, what we focused a lot, um, since we've had our reset at the high school is just on systems. Um, you know, a lot of times, you know, people have great ideas, and then they kind of just, um, you know, kind of goes flat when you pull it out the oven, um, because we've not given it, you know, the time to rise. And so, um, one thing that Dr. Johnson is doing now is she's flushing that out in terms of how that can support, um, how that can support Bianca Johnson.
Great, thank you.
Any other all-in questions, um, before we shift gears?
Set, I just have an observation that, you know, I think in general, I, I like the program a lot, and I hope we're not trying to just spread it out to spend the money over three years, but it does sound like, again, we're trying to scale up, and I would hope we would be spending it basically as quickly as we can, to a certain extent, to get as much value as soon as possible for the students who need it, so.
Yeah, it, it's not our plan to spread, it was not our plan to spread it out, it's just that we had a delayed start, and so we may spend it all in year two, uh, we'll see.
Yeah, I mean, it, it truly was sprung upon us. Um, and you know, the hardest part about all of it is getting the right people. Um, because most certainly we can spend it all, uh, but, you know, I think we, the plan was due. Uh, well, originally we were told the plan would be due in October, we didn't get, I mean, in September, we didn't get the template till like October. We didn't get feedback until November, and then we still weren't sure about, like, how is this reimbursement going to work, do we pay, do we get the money? So there was just a lot of uncertainty, because initially we were told that it was all in one year. Um, that all this had to happen in one year, and I think everyone was just on, yeah, everyone was on fire. Um, so then the DOE came back and said, you can roll the money over, which makes us feel a little bit better. Um, but, yeah, I mean, it just requires a, a lot of work, and it's just, then it's another program for someone to then manage. Thank you for that question. Any other all-in questions before we shift gears to staffing? Alright. Ms. Lewis.
Next slide.
You have to use your, um, middle school voice, Ms. Lewis. You have to use your middle school voice.
It's been a while since I, I think. So, so there was a question raised about the specificity of what positions were vacant. There are twenty-one positions that are vacant. Summary list will start from elementary school and go down through walk, I did it alphabetically through Walker School, and then there's one position that's at the division level. The ones that are highlighted in blue are positions that recently have been hired. We either, I, the offer was extended in January, or just this week. So if you go to the next slide, there are quite a few vacancies that are on that list that are being served by a long-term sub this year. So the governor has allowed for us to have a long-term sub in the position for the entire year, in the past, the legislation had said ninety days was the maximum. And they have left that as a open opportunity for schools throughout the pandemic, and it's still existing today. So we are trying to work to make sure that these individuals are licensed and endorsed in the areas, if they're in a certified role. All of them have been requested to, I, I don't, I don't want to say required, because they are sub, so we've requested that they apply for licensure, and we're supporting them through the licensure process, hopefully some of them will be identified as provisional licenses. When you look at the total vacancy savings, I looked at the summary sheet of how much we set aside or allotted for each position, each position type, total those together, and then I minus out the amount that was served by a long-term sub. Because they're gonna spend at least three-fourths of the money that has been allocated for a full-time position. You have any questions?
Alright, um, so the last, um, our next slide is just our, um, is just our budget changes sheet, um, since the last time, since the last time we've met, so I just wanted to make sure that we, um, where we are right now in terms of, um, the six million dollars, because that's the figure that we are working with to, um, to balance the budget. Um, and we've not had any changes, um, we've not had any changes since our last meeting, which was last week, yeah, last week. Yes, ma'am.
Do you, um, or your staff anticipate hearing from the city manager, anybody soon? Have you, I mean, I just didn't know if there had been conversations in the last week at all.
Um, Mr. Sa- Mr. Sanders and I have a meeting tomorrow, um, so hopefully I will um, have a better understanding if we're still, um, in the same place, or if there's a light at the end of the tunnel.
Uh, for my, for my colleagues on the, on the board, I, you know, I do not think this, and not to be criticizing Dr. Gurley and his staff in any way, but I don't think this budget is acceptable, and I would hope we can find a way to work with our partners at the city council to find, uh, get more money, uh, to ensure that we can, again, adequately compensate our staff, require the substitutes and, and staff the positions we need to staff to, again, meet the needs of our students. So, um, I'll just, I don't know, chair how we make that happen, but, uh, if you have to arm wrestle the mayor maybe, or, uh, or something like that, that could be a solution, uh, or, I don't know, but I, I do think we need to see something bigger. The revenue share that we're, we're getting from the city at this point, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I've had, um, some just casual and quick conversations with the mayor, I know that he, um, anticipated some meetings with, with the rest of the counselors, and, and I think as Dr. Gurley has indicated, you know, that you know, maybe by tomorrow, we, we'll have some type of feedback from the city. Um, I, I think this is just really, it just feels unique and really different. Um, and, and I don't know that, that we, um, have been in this situation, nor I don't think, you know, has the city been in the situation that they are, and I know that the collective bargaining and, and some other things are really big, um, that they are having to tackle and, and factor in, and I know that uh, the presentation and, and our work session with them last week, um, was received really well, and I think that they heard it. And, and I appreciated their questions, um, and, and our dialogue with them, so I do really feel like they heard and saw where we are at, and what our asks are about, but, and, and reality, I guess, we, we don't know, um, until we hear from them, and then, yeah, we need to kind of figure out where we go from there, so I know that, you know, Dr. Gurley, you and your team will, will receive that, and then, I mean, I think you have heard, um, you know, from the board that, that, and they heard very clearly that, that we want, and we feel like we need something different for our students. Um, so, it, it Um, so it it kind of to be determined, but I would, I would imagine quickly we're going to have to. Have some conversations and and come up with something different, so.
Chair, do you think it might be the case that our. Current plan for, I think, finalizing the budget and improving it might be, need to be delayed? And not sorry, Ms. Ms. Torres to put it all on you, but, uh. I think that I would like to maybe suggest to my colleagues, we might have to do that and I don't, I don't know if that. Has complications for staff, uh, other than again, sorry, more work on this, but if there's deadlines we have to meet for state. Requirements or something like that.
But I would, you know, I would, um, again, as I said, this is new and uncharted territories here and so I think there probably would be some. Um, considerations or repercussions, you know, and and maybe some of these, you know, some of. The budget needs to be approved to be able to move forward on certain things, but I would defer to Dr. Gurley and. Ms. Hoover and anybody else who wants to comment on that.
As it, as it stands right now, as it stands right now, um, we have to present. Our budget, our balanced budget to them on Tuesday, March the fifth, uh, as it stands right now. And they have to adopt a budget by April, April one. Uh, it's, it's sometime April, sometime beginning April. Yep, fourteen fifteen says the finance director, so they, they do have a hard stop. They have a deadline, but. As it stands right now, we would have to present a balanced budget to them on, um, Tuesday, March the fifth. So, I mean, I think if you could. Work that in this, that timeline, then most certainly, I mean, we, we just, it's about changing numbers and all of that on our end. And I think the, the logistical pieces, it, it would need to have, you would need to approve a budget by March the fifth.
So that's, that's like two and a half weeks.
So if I could just add. The school board, uh, will, uh, adopt the budget at their twenty-second, um, meeting. And and this looks like it'll be the budget that we adopt. And once it gets presented to the city and the city has a good fortune of finding us an additional three million dollars. Then we will come back and we will amend our budget and add to three million dollars with the, uh. Equivalent of the expenditures that will, um, match the revenues that we receive.
What would happen if we didn't adopt budget?
That's, that's what I think my colleagues are, 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 you know, indicating is that. They're not comfortable, we, I guess the, I'm not going to speak for everybody here. Adopting this as is, so then what happens?
I mean, what keeps us from adopting a budget with a different. Line item from the city. I mean, that hasn't been passed, like, could we not pass? Not necessarily the original budget that you presented to us, but some variation thereof and send. Present that at city council on March fifth and then it's on. I mean, I would rather than, I would, I am not interested in presenting our worst-case scenario for fear that that then gets into. I don't know.
At, at some point, you're going to amend your budget. You're going to amend the budget. I mean, either we will amend this budget up. For additional money from the city or additional money from the state, we will amend this budget. And there's nothing wrong with amending the budget. Um, I don't think it'd be good practice not to take a, an approved adopted, uh, adopted budget to the city.
So I guess to that end, you know.
But I think it's the adopted budget that we are asking for, not the, here's what we're giving you.
Get up in front of city council in a public setting and propose a budget that is this one.
So taking a nine million dollar, but so if we came back with a nine million dollar budget and then we. That budget went.
I would love the first one, but I understand that it's uncompromised.
I've never seen or heard that, but.
I, I just think that we would be setting ourselves up to amend, uh, to amend the budget.
If we're going to do it either, right, I think if we're doing that either way, and I think this is where, again, I know we've talked about it, but really. You know, having our teachers come and tell, tell the story where they need the support, have families. Again, tell their story where their children are receiving these supports and we need. We need the community, our school community to rally and to tell the story. This is a needs-based budget and six million dollars does not meet the needs of our students or our staff. And asking Dr. Gurley again to go in front of the city. And graciously thank them and accept six million dollars, knowing that that is not a needs-based budget. Is not fair to him. I, I, I don't, I don't see that it is, so.
So it's actually the school board's adopted budget that gets presented to council and typically school board members present the majority of it. Um, so I just wanted to point that out. Uh, we're, yep, there we go. Yeah, so, so there's a lot, yeah, just to get the correct visual here.
So I guess can we table this until we get some feedback on tomorrow's meeting with city council? Mr. Sanders, before we start spinning ourselves.
I don't, I mean, I don't think we've heard from, excuse me, Chair, but the other side of the room, but, um. That I, I'm. I would be more comfortable approving a, a, next week at nine million dollar, uh, budget.
So, Mr. Morris, Ms. Cooper, Ms. Richardson, any thoughts or comments?
Yeah, I, I've spoken to some of the other board members as well, um, in terms of strategy to make sure that we get what we need for our students.
And it's for the three million?
Pardon me?
I was, I, I apologize, I was talking.
So I think, um, there is unanimous, um, from board members that we would. Prefer to, to present, or I would prefer to present on behalf of Charlottesville City Schools with, with you, Dr. Gurley and team. Um, a budget that reflects, you know, a higher amount, something similar that, that we presented to city council last week. You know, and, and we will, you know, get word from them sometime tomorrow, I imagine, but I think, I think that's. The direction that we are all. More comfortable in, in heading at this point. Now, whether or not you and your team, you know, can, can look at other parts of, of our operating budget or, or. You know, in the next week or two and and see if there are other tweaks that can be made, I don't know and that's, that's all up to you. I don't. I know you all work really, really hard at all of that and and scrutinize those things, but. Um, I, I don't feel like anything that was presented to city council last week was excessive or, or, um. Something that we don't need, that our students don't need.
Chair, I mean, I, uh, excuse me once again, but I. Dr. Gurley, I, I do think this is a political conversation between the city councilors and the school board and, and, uh. So, you know. Yeah, I, I do hope and I'm, I'm sure the chair is going to be talking with the mayor, but that there's maybe some. Other two-on-two conversations that happen before next week, you know, if need be and that we can resolve this before. Uh, we have to amend a budget or make a budget that is not maybe what the city is expecting, but. Uh, you know, we will work it out in my mind, so, and those. Private or other conversations can be had, you know, in between now and again, the other public meetings we have.
So just to look at the timeline, it's the next, next slide, so. The twenty-second is next Thursday. Um, so our sidebar conversation that I got a little distracted, I, I apologize, um, we were having a conversation about. Um, we do public comment on the budget. And so how does amending the budget impact public comment, um, public comment on the budget because it's. When we, the proposed budget was the one we had at the beginning of the month and there's public comment on that this. Throughout the month. Um, so I just, I'll seek appropriate next steps because I don't know how amending up impacts. Um, I don't know how amending up impacts that in any way and it may not. Uh, just wanted to make sure we get clarification on that before, before you all approve. Anything that wasn't what happened, what was the budget at the beginning of the month. And that's, that's for me to do. I just want to, I was just saying that out loud. That's, that's work for, that's work for me to do.
Yeah, and I, I'm not sure either, like I said, uncharted territories here, but. I mean, when I, when I think about the two budgets, you know, and I know you guys have done a great job as far as, you know. Highlighting in yellow what was, you know, and what's been removed and all of that, but I, when I look at that screen, what I see in my head is. You know, like the budget, a sheet, you know, almost like side by side. You know, this is what Charlottesville City School Board is, is wanting, um, and is asking for. I, I don't know if we need to do that, you know, I mean, I, I, I know and there's no doubt in my mind that we're, we're being transparent and what we. What we need and want for, um, for our students, so. And I don't think any, anybody in, in the community is not going to support it. Again, I, I as well am very grateful for Charlottesville City and how they have supported the schools. Um, and I, and we do all hear and and acknowledge that they're in a very different. Spot and space as they're looking at their budget. Um, and as I said last week, Charlottesville City Schools and every single student. Um, is, is a subset of who they are taking care of within this community. So we do have, and and I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted to say, Dr. Gurley or, or any of your staff, but we do have, um. You know, our, our meeting next Thursday, we do have a presentation. On Tuesday, March fifth at, at city hall. So just as a reminder, um, we are going to be moving into, um. Public comment here, comments from members of the community. And I did want to just take, uh, a second real quickly, just to acknowledge, um. For community members and I have touched base with, with each of the board members, um, prior to making this statement, but I wanted to acknowledge that there is a. A contingency of, of folks, community members, parents, students. Um, partners and businesses within the community and and they've sent us emails and they've made public comment. Specific to completion of the lighting at the track. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, that we are receiving that, that we as a board are very supportive of that. Um, for all of the reasons stated that could benefit our students, um, in that setting and and community members. And I know those, those folks are paying attention and they understand that we are in, um. Again, a unique situation and we have a, a big gap right now, so we. Um, I, but again, I wanted to say I appreciate, we appreciate them continuing to, to ask and to try and raise money. Um, for that and, um, as we work through our budget and and can figure out. How we can, um, close our gap currently with this budget. Um, and we will do everything we can to support them, but I just wanted to make that statement. So we will now turn to, um, public comment. I believe we have, um, a couple of people possibly here. With us tonight, so if you will please come to the mic, state your name, your address and know that you have three minutes to make your comment. Um, I have a Ms. Stacy Gerhart.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Gerhart. Our family lives at seven oh eight Highland Avenue. And I'm the extremely proud parent of a kindergartner in the special ed program at Johnson Elementary. Over the last few weeks, I've virtually attended the community budget update and school board meeting. And learned about the vast discrepancy between what Dr. Gurley and the Charlottesville City Schools have requested from the city and Commonwealth. For the upcoming budget and what the city schools are currently slated to receive and quite honestly, I'm extremely dismayed and concerned. And Charlottesville City School, if Charlottesville City Schools only receives the six million dollars that is currently allocated. That they are currently allocated to receive, students' learning experiences will be negatively impacted, particularly our most vulnerable students. Our six-year-old son Hugh has autism spectrum disorder, epilepsy, A D H D, expressive language disorder, receptive language disorder. Sensory processing disorder and hypotonia. Additionally, he is missing four genes and more genetic testing is slated for this summer. Hugh qualified for services with the city back in late fall of two thousand nineteen, when he was not even two and a half years of age. In his time with the city, he has attended Burnley Moran, Johnson, Venable and again Johnson. It is startling to think that a neurodivergent toddler with documented differences was asked to start over and over again. So that he could tend to school based on where there was an available classroom, where there was a teacher, where there was a specialized program. And then finally, when that program was disbanded, go back to his actual home district. Our son is a perfect example of what happens when resources dictate the education. And not the best practices and proven research dictating the education. In addition to existing resource limitations such as our son's journey, Charlottesville continues to grow in population and there's no end in sight to that. The number of our English language learners in our schools is projected to continue to grow and we welcome those students and families, but we must support them. We now have K-Tech to fund an incredibly important program in our community. And as you saw tonight, the cost of healthcare, health insurance and benefits continue to rise, maybe not, maybe it'll taper off according to tonight. And this is certainly not an area where, where we can skip if we want to continue to attract the best educators for our children. As we all know, the needs continue to grow and we cannot afford for the city to limit financial support of our children's education. If Charlottesville City Schools do not receive the funding they requested, I worry about many things. I worry that our most vulnerable children, our English language learners, our children in the special education programs and our children from socio-economically disadvantaged households. Will not receive an education equitable to their peers. I worry, worry that they will struggle, struggle at a greater rate than others and will not be prepared for adulthood. Where we dream for them to feel engaged with, valued by and employed by their community. I worry that avoidable situations of under-supported faculty and staff like what happened at Charlottesville High School last fall. Will become too common when we do not give educators what they need and of course tremendous gratitude to Principal Leather, Leatherwood. Assistant Principal Bryant, Assistant Principal Butler, Assistant Principal Garland, Assistant Principal Webb Jordan. All of the dedicated educators and staff who reopen C H S and are giving our children their futures back. Through education, accountability and unconditional love, all things every child deserves. We must fully fund our faculty and staff and not take shortcuts or last November will be the warning sign that went unaddressed and ignored. To undercut our children's education is to shortchange our children's livelihoods. All of our children's futures have been entrusted to the Charlottesville City Schools, Charlottesville School Board, Charlottesville City and Commonwealth in Virginia for their care. Please support, please continue to support all of our students and continue to work with the city to fund Dr. Gurley's full upcoming budget. Thank you for your service to this community and your time tonight.
Thank you, um, Mr. Zimmerman.
Hi, Dan Zimmerman. That is going to be a hard act to follow. That was an incredible presentation. Thank you. Um, I live at, uh, eleven oh one Sherwood Road. I have two students in the, um, Charlottesville Public School System, an eleventh grader and seventh grader. And, uh, I got involved in just paying attention to the school board process, the budgeting process through advocacy for the school lights. Uh, or for the track lights at C H S. Having sat in on a few of these meetings, um. I fully support what I heard this evening from, from all of the school. I fully support what I heard this evening from, from all of the school board members. I absolutely think we should be fully funding our, our schools. I have a few comments just about kind of very specific things that I've seen and, and they're kind of nerdy maybe, but I, I thought that the slide in particular that I saw last week showing the percentage of city funding was a very effective slide, and I think that's something you should continue to show to not only the city councilors, but all of our community. I think seeing that percentage of funding slide down is very, very telling. I think on the opposite end of that, I thought the SOQ funded slide was not as clear and was actually quite confusing to me and I think others. So there's your two comments about presentations that I've seen. And then one other thing I might, I just would say that in this, in the discussions around the ADM number, that's, from what I understand, it seems to be an inaccurate picture of where our students and what our schools are actually going through right now. I think it would be useful to see a budget based on our actual ADM. So if we were to run an ADM today for our students or even for next year, what does that budget look like? Because that's truly what we need, not something that was based on numbers from two to three years ago. So those are my comments and thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room who would like to speak tonight? And if not, we will go online and it looks like Mr. McCarthy, you've got your hand raised. You've got three minutes, sir.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I just had a couple of questions, actually, if I may. The first is, when is it best for us to appear to put pressure on city councils? Is it this March 5th meeting, if we want to put pressure on getting a more, a larger budget approved? That's the first question. Second question is, there is a slide that was presented by Dr. Gurley at the last, at the joint meeting, joint budget meeting. And I think that last speaker was also referring to the slide that I'm curious about where it talked about the different departments that the city allocated funds to, and it even compared it, I think, to statewide trends. And there were some departments that got more, like a three percent more or six percent more, or in our, in the case of the schools, it seems like that we got less than was a statewide trend. Did I misunderstand that? Or did I understand that correctly? I'd really like to have some clarification about that slide. And then lastly, I would like again to advocate for a dedicated restorative justice specialist at Charlottesville High School. And that the person that is working and wearing several hats that works in restorative justice for the whole district, if they can have a more robust budget for restorative justice, because I think that that will do so much to help the goals that we are trying to achieve in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else online there? So yeah, just quickly, and we don't typically answer questions, but I am just going to refer you to, it's called the Auditors of Public Accounts. So the APA 2022 Comparative Cost Report, and that's probably online and available for reference, but that's, that's the slide that I think there was questions about. Oh, yeah, as far as, I mean, just for the public's perspective and, and just continuing to support schools and showing up and, and I think you can be emailing city council at any point in time and/or us. I mean, I think they welcome emails, they do take note of those. So they, you know, they're talking now, but they are getting ready to dig into their individualized work sessions that go through different parts of their, their funding over the next month, I would imagine. So, but I think today is fine. You could start. And I think unless my fellow board members have any questions or comments, it looks like we are all done with public comment. I appreciate, we appreciate the presentation and the information from everybody and everything that you all do to show up for our students. So thank you, and I will adjourn the meeting.